What's up everybody? It's your man Danell, AKA Small Guy Promotions, AKA The Omaha Fatty, coming with another podcast episode of What's Up Omaha? Today, I have a first time guest, a wonderful guest for you all to meet. You might know her on Twitter as Jen Joy. We've got Jen Bauer. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm so well. I'm so well. Loving that that nice weather outside.
Little vitamin D, little vitamin D, fresh air. Never hurt anybody.
Yes, especially after, you know, last week and whatnot. So, um, but yeah, so Jen, you know, I had asked you to be on just because you got a lot of things going on in your life. You're a busy lady, a community focused woman. Through the years that I've known you, you've always been out doing different things in the community. You've come out to my events to support my events. You know, I know you're down in the Exarban area doing stuff all the time. Maybe not so much in the last year, but.
No. It's been rough. Yeah, it's been rough for all of us. I mean, you know, it's just there. And across from the table from you.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, this is definitely an adjustment phase for everyone. You know, you would think after a year, we would kind of be used to it, but there's still some things that don't quite feel right, you know? But at least we do have the technology. I know I said a long time ago, like when it first started, at least we are in a day and age where we have the technology that we have, because I couldn't imagine going through something like this 20 years ago with no, you know, internet or social media. Well, I mean, there was internet, but not like it is now.
No contact. I mean,
Yep.
Yeah, and see 20 years ago was your day, you know, 20 years ago wasn't.
Yeah, yeah, yep. And still just, I mean, you know, the advancements in technology have been crazy. So we have wonderful things like this, like Zoom and all this stuff where we can still kind of get that human interaction and connect. Yeah, so I think back to the point that I started making was, you know, you're really community focused person. And that's probably why we get along pretty well. But we met through Twitter, through, you know, and this was, I don't even know how many years it's been.
It's been, it's been at least five, at least five.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, then tweet meets were going on and you know, I don't even know how, when I got on Twitter, how I got into the, the circle of people who were, you know, talking like you and Jessica and like the Joes and just all those guys and Jim. I don't know how I got into the circle of that at all. Probably some, you know, just.
I think honestly, it might have been Mean Streets.
Could have been, maybe.
I mean, I think at that point in time, I know, I know for sure that in 20, yeah, I don't even know. I was living in an apartment further down the road and got bored one night and just like, oh, I'll see what's happening. Thing I know, I'm looking at a tweet from a Mean Streets that somebody had retweeted. And back then, it was all about the snark, right? I mean, there was, it was kind of irreverent, you know, a lot different than it is now is what I mean. And so, you know, you just kind of started being, you know, interactive with that account. And I think that led to Joel and Joe and Joe and Jim, you know, down the road, which then led to Jessica, who does, you know, the majority of the tweet meat setup.
Yep.
I will never forget going into Cali Taco and, uh, you know, meeting, meeting Joe and Becky Spadilla, okay? Whose kids told them, be careful about meeting people you meet on the internet. I mean, you know, we are adults here and their, and their children who were probably early twenties at the time. We're like, no, no, you gotta be careful. It was funny.
Yep. See, and I remember my first sweet meet, you know, Mets, he always works Tuesday and Thursday evening. So if we're ever doing anything, it's just the girls and I. And we were at, it was one of the places that closed. It was over there off of like 132nd and Maple, I saw 88.
Eighty-eight, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We had the back room.
Mm-hmm. That was the first, first time that I had gone out to one of those events. And as you said, the Spadillas were there. Those were people who I'm, some of the first people that I met there and, uh, you know, Becky was commenting on the girls, like their glasses and stuff and, or whatever. So, you know, with her being in the eyeglass, eye doctor field, uh, you know, your industry. So that, that was pretty great. And then they, you know, we loved that place because they brought us cotton candy.
Well, I know, I seriously miss that place. One of the best places to do birthdays and happy hour. So it's a shame it's gone, but.
Yep, yep. Well, and I credit, you know, the tweet me, like that kind of stuff with, uh, expanding my area in Omaha. I've always been like an east of 72nd kind of guy and do stuff like that and learning about all these restaurants and everything that are out west. Like I've, I've, I've grown. I've gone outside of my normal comfort zone.
Yeah, cause like Pizon's, we had a tweet meet out at Pizon's years ago and I would never, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in midtown, right? I would never think to go to 156th and Center for pizza. But honey, let me tell you, I will drive out there for one of their calzones.
Oh, they're so huge.
Good.
We, we actually, yeah, yeah, we went there after, uh, I think it was probably two years ago, a year and a half ago, something like that, after one of our events. And we had, we met some friends there from, uh, out of town and their son got one and he, he's my daughter's age. So he, he's 14 now, so he would have been like 12. And they brought this calzone out and it was just like so huge. I love Pizon's.
And you know, now they're, um, oh, I know. And now they're doing pies from Newman Grove Cafe.
And how did that start, Jen?
Hmm, I don't, I don't know. Pandemic stories such as they are. Yeah, that, that's a, that is interesting. I decided I was gonna take a road trip because I, I just couldn't stand to be cooped up anymore. And, uh, you know, I texted Don and Adam and said, I'm coming out, but what do you think about me getting some slices to bring back to few select people? And Adam, well, what about delivering whole pies? Like I don't, I don't think it's gonna fly, but all right, check it out. And I mean, but I don't know if the story goes, he was sold out in seven hours or something. It was insane. So, um, you know, I went, picked up the pies, loaded up the station wagon and brought him to the target at 171st and, and Center or 80th and Center. And, um, after that, I, I met from Pizon's, his grandmother lives out in Newman Grove. So he's like, bring some pies back, you know? And now it's just started as this regular, I don't know if it's weekly or I don't know, but I've gotten another peanut butter pie. I was gonna share it with somebody, but I ate it all.
From, from the pictures and all the stuff, the stuff that I see online, I can see why you would eat it all, how you could eat it all.
I'm not proud. I'm not proud.
I still have not had one and I, I said that we would go out there. Unfortunately, when we started our pizza tour that we're doing, it wasn't on a Friday. We, I think we did Pizon's like probably second or third or somewhere in there. It was early on because we're on our last, the last one was our 14th. So we're on our 15th week of our pizza tour. And they didn't have that on the Friday that we went out there. So I'm like, ah, but I will get one of those pies and if I have to take a little day trip out there to Newman Grove, I'm cool with that too.
Yeah, it's a nice drive. Good people, great food. Get the scotch.
Yes. I, I, you know what? Scotcheroos, people, people love those. So I would definitely try those. I gotta get out there. And I know they have a great, uh, social media presence with their Twitter account and, and Instagram and whatnot. So it's always cool to see the different specials that they have. And you know, it's just one of those small towns that you're like, you know what? That's a really cool place.
It really is. And it's cute. And they've got this really cool salvage shop, salvage shop next to it. And, um, old antiques and architectural pieces. They've got like three or four warehouses to pick through. I've got a stained glass window that I got out there. And I mean, if, if you like that stuff, which I have an old home, so I like that stuff.
Yeah.
It's a good day trip.
Well, and you know, since we're talking about food and pizza and whatnot, I mean, you're right there by Tasty Pizza, which those are great. And I had them for the first time last year and we enjoyed it. And oh man, those, they're like personal sized pizzas and, and you can eat one of those and not feel bad. Or two, you know?
No, not at all. You know, buy two on a Saturday and have one on Saturday and one on Sunday when they're closed. I don't know. Some people say they do that. I would, wouldn't know.
I think smart people probably do that.
Get two different kinds, change it up. It's, it's a good setup. Yeah. You know, um, when I first moved here, um, they would close for the month of, basically people in the neighborhood and then, um, college students, right? So, um, the owner, she's from Costa Rica. So she would just go home for a month, you know? And literally like when I would want it the most, they would be closed.
Yeah.
But they've grown. They've got a second location at 60th and Leavenworth. Or I'm sorry, 60th and Woolworth. And, um, right there by Jonesy's Tacos and Tracks. I mean, there's some, there's some really good food in this area. Let me tell you.
Yes.
Jay Coco.
That's the place we wanna go.
Uh, another pizza place. I get it all confused. Yeah. And then you get down on Leavenworth and you've got, um, Picasso and, um, Barrett's. So I'm, I'm not exactly the Omaha fatty. But I, I really like supporting my, my local restaurants. It's really very important to me.
Yeah. And what, what is it about the local restaurants or supporting, uh, the local restaurants that's appealing to you? How, how did you get into that?
I like, I like local meat things, right? I'm not a big fan. I, I don't have a problem with chains. I don't want to say that. But you know, it, it takes a lot to, to put your life into a restaurant, right? Your hard earned money, it's your reputation, it's, it's everything. And so in my mind, it's better to support the small guy, you know, because not everybody sees that same, you know, they don't see it the same way.
Yeah.
So, um, especially during the pandemic. So, right? The African grill up in the shops of Exarban, she literally opened the day the shutdowns went into effect. What do you do? I mean, this woman puts everything out there on the line and then boom. Plus it's like African Chipotle, right? And, and people are like, I don't, uh, I don't get this. And honestly, anything that, any restaurant that has plantains has my business, period, right? So, is just going to ruin, you know, I mean, Omaha's got, Omaha has some of the best restaurants. I mean, how many times have we been on triple D on the Food Network, you know? Um, and some of those places aren't here anymore. Some of them have moved. Uh, so you know, at the beginning of the shutdown, I just thought, I, I don't have the largest social media footprint like somebody does. But I thought, you know, I'm just gonna start promoting local. And then that started, you know, promoting local craftsmen, local candle makers, local, somebody putting their heart and soul into it is something I can get behind.
Yep. Oh, I'm totally with you on that.
Yeah, yeah, it's important. I mean, it brings flavor to the community, you know?
Yep. And, and I, I, I share kind of the same standpoint on that as you do. When, I mean, of course I've always, you know, for however many years enjoyed supporting local. Um, and that's why I started doing what I do in the first place, but really during the pandemic and maybe it's more, I don't have a lot of vices. Like I don't, I don't shop or anything like that. So food is like the thing that I spend money on. So when the pandemic started, I just said, hey, you know, and at the time, uh, I was actually working like a ton of overtime and they were paying us like double time for overtime. So we weren't really hurting at the time. So I said, well, we have all this extra money. Let's, let's try to help these mom and pops that are, you know, maybe struggling, struggling a little bit. And, uh, let's just put that money to good use. So I was working these hours and I just said, you know what? If we're going out to a place and, and let me tell you, Jen, like I'm cheap. I don't like to spend money. I don't like to spend money. Like my wife, she, she is the reason that I tip. When we started dating, like in, so what am I? I'm, I'm 39. So, so when we, when we met, you know, it was 16, 17 years ago and I was younger and I didn't really, I wasn't a big tipper. That wasn't like really a thing, but she, she is in the service industry. And we would talk about people tipping her or when we would go out to eat and she would tip. So she is the one who got me into tipping because I'm like, oh, you know what? You're right. We should tip. So I tip now, but from going to not wanting to spend money to like, hey, you know what? I don't care. We can drop a hundred dollars here. You know, uh, eighty dollars here, you know, to feed the family, whatever. You know, we're spending $300 a weekend to eat because we're going out Friday, Saturday and Sunday to try to support and help those places. So, at that time I was just like, you know what, man? This is totally worth it. Um, if it makes the differences and especially if, like you said, you know, not, maybe you don't have the biggest, you know, footprint on social media, but you never know who will see a picture of, of, of post that you made. So, and that's how it started with, I think that's exactly how Omaha fatty started to be, you know? I was just taking pictures years ago of everywhere that I was going. And then I somehow came up with this thought to be the Omaha fatty. And I just kind of put it into overdrive now. So it's, it's.
You gotta be true to yourself.
Yes, yes. Yes. But yeah, totally on board with you.
You, you were big on your Google, um, reviews as well too, weren't you? I mean,
Yep. That's how it started. Uh, so through Small Guy Promotions, again, we're not just specific to food, but I was just taking pictures wherever I was going and doing reviews. And then my partner reached out to me, uh, through Facebook. That's how we knew each other. And he's a web design guy and he had had the thought himself of doing something like this. But he's got a younger kid at home, like two or something like that. And maybe a little older, but he doesn't have time to go out and eat. So he reached out to me and said, hey, I like what you're doing. I see your reviews. And every time I read a review, I want to go out and eat. And he just approached me about, uh, how could we make this something tangible? So we did that. Yeah. And it's from the Google review. So, uh, I never thought about being able to, I don't know, have such a big impact, uh, but it's pretty great when people come up to you and tell you that they tried a place because of your post or your video or review or whatever it was. So, I just want to help and being around people like you who are community minded. You know, I think it just helps because we all talk and share amongst each other, you know, places that we're going. And we may not go to all the same places, but even if I watch you and you go to one place and I start to go there and I like it, we made a difference.
Right. And every, you know, every restaurant's not for everybody. I went to Broncos the other day and you're not a Broncos fan, you know? All good, but you tried it. And that's the point is you tried it, you know? There's a cheeseburger place up in Blackstone. It's called Cheeseburgers. And, um, it's super easy car side or curb side pickup or walk in and pick it up. I think they might have two or three tables. So they're not really set up for in-house. And I, you know, I just posted a picture and my girlfriends were like, you know, in the area, we're like, wow. Really just tried it for the first time, you know? Cause you can't do things with people, you know? It's not like I can go pick up my girls and go, you know, let's go get a burger.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of that, but you know, it's, it's important to me that the community stays vibrant. It's important to me that people in the community stay connected. And I mean, I know everybody can see my little sign behind me. And yes, I am running for Omaha City Council. Who I am, right? Um, at the beginning of the pandemic, uh, one of the, um, neighborhood groups called One Omaha tried to have me help get them started with an app to assist people. Cause you know, at the beginning, it was our elderly and those who couldn't, you know, couldn't go. Uh, the at-risk folks that needed the help the most, you know? And then it, you know, we got them settled and you know, then it became people who lost their jobs. You know, people who couldn't leave because now they have health or, um, you know, daycare issues or, you know, what have you. I mean, there's been some great stories of triumph in the community, but there's been some really sad stories as well. Uh, one of my neighbors started a pantry called the Exarban Little Pantry. And, um, the amount of traffic through this little pantry, it started out as just one of those little take one, leave one type of things.
Yep.
You see in front of people's houses. And now she, she's done turkey boxes at Thanksgiving. She did Christmas boxes. She did, um, pizzas from Tasty Pizza for Valentine's Day. You know, a nine dollar pizza to you and me is like huge to somebody else.
Yep.
So, um, you know, she just thought it'd be something little and it is just blown up. And the, and you know, and the thought is that eventually when we get back to, to normal, it won't be as needed, right? That's the hope, but we, we just don't know.
Yep.
Our people, I, I just worry about people, you know, that's me.
Well, and the thing like you said, we don't know that, that non, that not knowing or that like, there's no definitive answer of like how things are gonna end or like not even like an expected time where something is gonna change. So you just don't know. And, uh, you know, a lot of the talk has been about checking on people and like mental health during this time. Uh, because people were so just, and not by choice, but withdrawn and, and not maybe around people. Maybe everybody doesn't have, you know, a family at their house. Like, you know, like you said, you can't just pick up your, your girls and go have a burger. So, uh, and, and there's not, not that life has just stopped. There's still other things that are going on like you touched on. And maybe it's not just like a needy thing, but life is still happening and people, whether it's COVID related or not, people are getting sick and, you know, passing away for different reasons. So I mean, that's just like a huge deal. It's a huge deal in normal times, but now it's like even crazier where people can't, you know, maybe go to a funeral and pay their respects or say goodbye to someone or just, there's just so many different factors and levels of all the stuff that's going on.
Yep. But then there's some triumph too. I mean, there's some triumphs, new restaurants opening. You know, people have started new jobs, people have gotten promotions, people have had babies. I mean, now we're looking at the COVID baby boom, right? I'm not, not in this house. And I have a coworker who, both of her nephews who are in their mid twenties, they both, you know, just recently had babies. We have friends that are pregnant that, you know, are due in April. That's, that's a COVID baby. That's dog lockdown baby.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know what they say about like the winter time, like usually after the winter, that's when, you know, I'm a September baby. So, you know, after the winter, it's like you're just cooped up in the house all the time now. So.
Exactly. All the time. I'm an October baby. So I, I, you know, I was like, what was going on in February of 19, whatever that was.
Well, I would, I will tell you that my mother and father, their, their anniversary is New Year's Eve. Yeah. And my birthday is September 29th.
Uh huh, yeah. I can do the math.
Yeah, yeah. So, but yeah, like you said, there are some, um, you know, some, some positives to pull from it. And one of the things, not necessarily a community thing, but it could be, I guess, uh, just in the business world, there being new possibilities with work environment and people being able to work from home. So companies now are saying you don't have to live in the same city or the same state. And I know, uh, when the pandemic first started, they were talking about big cities like New York and how people didn't want to be around people. So they were selling their homes and moving outside of town to smaller places. And you know, working from home is like a thing now that people would not have thought of. I mean, there were some companies doing it before or you would have the option. But now more companies are finding out that they can actually employ people who don't need to come to the office every day. And it's actually a little more cost effective because you don't have to pay for all those utilities for an order.
Yeah. I, I unfortunately, I do feel that, um, we're gonna see a little bit of a run on the real estate, the commercial real estate market. You know, I think it's gonna be hit pretty hard when this all susses out, you know? But like for me, I used to work at home two days a week, Mondays and Fridays. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I get up, get in my car, you know? And now I don't have that. And I will tell you, there's a lot of adjustment and you're the same way. I mean, adjustment that people have to go through, you know? Do you shower? Do you not shower? Do you put real clothes on?
Yep.
No, you can only live in a bra, in a, in a hoodie and sweatpants for so long. I, I have to admit, you know, it gets to the point where it's like, I just want to put real clothes on, you know? A sweater, a dress. I haven't had a dress on in forever.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll get there. Weather's gonna break. Things are gonna be better. Right now, we're still gonna do our part, you know? It's all good, but transition jobs in January. Um, I got a promotion. So, uh, my boss is in the UK. Thank you. Thank you. Um, my boss is in the UK. It's a whole new reporting structure. And he's like, don't, don't expect to go into the office. There's really no need. And I'm like, well, you know, it's, it's an office building of 400 people. They'll need my space to, if, if you still have to do, um, social distancing, right? They'll need my space because I'm, I'm not part of the group here, but you know, living paycheck to paycheck at my company just because of the, the type of job it is, right?
Yeah.
And because they don't have to drive and because they're not going out to eat at lunch, they're saving money as well. So the downside of that is the connection, you know? Our company doesn't really use, um, this sort of technology. We have it. But it's always just been, you know, we're just on these meetings. We don't do video. And now every once in a while, you're like, you gotta warn me because I gotta shower and, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, bed head.
Yeah.
But you know, we're, we're getting to that connection and there, the one thing I have learned is that they're getting, companies are doing really good on their communication skills, right? So just like I've been trying to do with the Neighborhood Association, oh, which by the way, I'm president of the Exarban Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association. I try to communicate, you know, and in, in rare instances, you gotta over communicate.
Right.
And, you know, I know people don't like to want to mess with technology, but at this point, we're seeing a, you know, an uptick of the use of Zoom and social media. So, um, I totally lost my train of thought. But, um, my company has town halls now with like CEOs and CFOs. And we never did that before. We did it in the IT group, but you know, corporate HR, we didn't hear from those people, you know? And now every quarter they're, you know, taking our questions and I've heard of a lot of companies doing that. And I just hope it, it continues past, past the COVID.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be the, that'll be the, uh, actual, you know, when it, when you know what you're getting is like, okay, it wasn't just like, we were reacting to the situation. Like we really want to make this change and like, we really believe in this.
Yeah. And, and that's something that I'm gonna have to work on is continuing to, to, to communicate with the neighborhood. You know, people in the, in the neighborhood and we've gotten new members and we've gotten people to say, well, could you provide services within the county or where do we go get COVID tested or, you know, I, Services within the county or where do we go get COVID tested or, you know, I, I need a job. Where can I look? Or what's the bus schedule? You know, I mean, I, I have a bus stop out front of my house. That was the, one of the coolest things I learned. I'm like, I don't even know what the bus routes are or how much it costs to ride a bus. But somebody said, hey, could you do this? And it's like, alright. I'll do it.
Well, and I'm glad that you brought up uh, being the president of the organization because I wanted to ask you. How it's of course changed since the pandemic has started. Um, but how can people who want to get out and be involved? In things like with it being so different than it used to be? What are, what are some things that you are doing or that you, you see people doing to be able to get out in the community and help, aside from eating everywhere?
Yeah, yeah, well, um. Excuse me, there are groups out there. Through the city for one. Um, if you live in anywhere in Omaha, I mean, north, south, east, west, whichever. If you go to the. And there are over a hundred and eight um, accredited, for lack of better words, neighborhood associations. In Omaha. I mean, and they're not homeowner associations, right? These are just ways to disseminate information from the city. That's what their intent was to be, right? So like if somebody comes in and wants to tear down the house next to you, they have to go get a zoning ordinance or what have you. You're gonna find out about that information through the Neighborhood Association. So um, there's also. Which are like my, um, my alliance is the Midtown. Uh, Neighborhood Alliance and the Southwest Omaha Neighborhood Alliance. So they're like overarching. And they do bigger things, right? They do grant money and beautification and. Um, there's some uh, scholarship stuff, uh, and they're always looking for volunteers, right? Um, and your, your time is basically um, maybe two hours a month, maybe. So the Neighborhood Association has meetings every other month and just about every other. Neighborhood association that I know of does the same. So, you know, we used to meet down at a church, now we're meeting on Zoom. Then you have business alliances. You have the Old Market Business Alliance, which um. You know, they, they're there to again, get information out from the city to their business owners. Um, but all that's on the mayor's page, right? So you can go there, find your leader, send him an email, text, you know, what have you. Um, a lot of these do, um, like I said, beautification, park cleanups. Um, Dundee does the um, Dundee Days. And they do um, their flower pots that you see if you look on a. Beautiful flower pots in the summer, um, they put those together, um. There's ways. Um, there's also One Omaha, which is uh. I believe affiliated with one of the larger philanthropists in town. I'm not quite sure which one. Um, and they um, they do more service oriented work and geared towards the neighborhood associations. Right? But other than that, it is, it is difficult, you know, it's almost like getting the vote out, right? How do you get people to sign up to vote? Well, usually it's a face-to-face thing. You know, how do you get people to do the census? You go to their door. We're in the same boat, so you know, we're always looking for volunteers and like I said, it's maybe one to two hours a week. Or a month, sorry, one to two hours a month. Which is a big deal. Um, you know, we're, we look for people to be a secretary, to take the meetings, minute meetings. Um, but we've done other things too, you know, we've raised money for um. Right? So that they could ride the trails in our area because the, the bicycles that the police had were mainly used down at TJ TD Ameritrade Park. And uh, in the old market. So we said, you know, this area has a lot of the Keystone Trail. We want bikes. So we raised some money. Um, we facilitated the neighbors getting the traffic circle at uh, sixty-third and Shirley. So we had to meet with the city planning department and the engineer. So um, it's not just, let's go clean up a park or, you know, plant some flowers. There's, there's other things as well. There's murals. And this year, then the mayor's grant. Is specific, we, we need to aim our activities specifically towards helping. Uh, the community that's impacted by COVID. Okay, so um. Whether it's a school, you know, like we have an elementary school, we have a couple here in the neighborhood, you know, do they need masks? Do they need? Wipes, you know, that's. So they can hit me up, you know, I'm on Twitter at Jen Joy.
Nice, nice. Yeah, I feel like you have a lot of uh. I don't know, you, I don't see myself as, I mean, yes, a community person, but I feel like you're more of a, a, an activist. Like you, you're out changing things, like you're actually. Uh, not that what, what I do is not making a difference on some level, but yours is more uh. It froze a little bit, sorry. What'd you say?
No, it's like, it's just different, you know, you do your, like, when you had your events at Hopescape, right? Um, which I, you know, I didn't know anything about Hopescape. And now I know about the Hope Center for Kids. And now I, and now I donate, you know? So you're, we're ready to do in our own in a different way.
Yep.
You know?
Well, it's funny that you say that because the whole. Concept behind my What's Up Omaha uh, design is, is it's kinda like a superhero with. The city on your back, but it's not just like me being the superhero. It's, it's to say that we all. By playing our part, we all can be superheroes, like, and I, I can remember always. I would talk to like the kids for the Hobie, Nebraska, um, you know, one of the first times that I met with them, I said it. You don't need a million dollars to make a difference. Um, you know, and it doesn't even have to be like a financial contribution to, to whatever cause to make a difference. All you have to do is do something positive for someone else. And you know, I call, talk about it being the ripple effect. And you don't know how many people that goes out to after tho- those initial ripples. You know, you can't see them anymore. They're still out there in the water and creating energy and that's all it is, it's energy, so. If we can keep putting positive energy out there, we don't know how it can transform and what it'll do, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think, and I think that's especially important now, you know, when um. Heard, you know, is, is, is something to somebody. You know, I mean, like with the snow, um, you know, every time it snows, I go, I run out there and I get my snow blower and I just go up the street and down. One side the other and one of the neighbors said, you know, you don't have to do that. I said, I want to, you know? And they're like, well, thank you, because last Sunday's snow was just like super heavy, you know? Um, but it is, you're right. I love that analogy. The ripples on the water just going forever. That's awesome.
Yep, yeah, but that's kind of what I, I try to do and I say, for me, it was a thing of where. Uh, I used to, I mean, I still complain about stuff. But I used to like, I, I feel like I've grown a lot and stopped complaining about a lot of things that I used to complain about. Um, but I can just remember always like being annoyed by stuff and granted, I still am, especially if you ask Mitzi and the kids, there's still a bunch of stuff that. I complain about, but as far as community and saying how, like, I don't know if you know this, but. I used to say that I didn't wanna have kids because the world is such a horrible place.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it was just like, well, okay, I have kids now and whatnot, like what can I do? How can I? Instead of just sitting back and complaining about how bad the world is, what can I do to make some positive impact? So that's how it all started for me. There's many different factors, but it was that and my, you know, losing my dad and just. All these stuff or all these things came around the same time and they just kinda. Helped each other uh, around that time and just, it, it turned into Small Guy and whatnot, so.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to know you Dee.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I just adore you and your wife and, and the kids and, and you know, you're, you're doing good things with your daughters too, you know?
Trying.
Your little, uh, your oldest is doing her jewelry and, or, you know. Entrepreneurs make the world.
Hey, you know, i- and it's funny, uh, when I posted that she got her pages up for her jewelry. It, it just made me think about how she initially started at the events. And it was a thing where I had done a couple and she had this jewelry making kit. And she came and asked like a week before the event was scheduled and she said, can I, can I sell jewelry at your event? And I go, um, I don't know if you have the right kind of, you know. Stuff to make jewelry that people will wanna buy. And I said, but I tell you what, if, you know, you can participate. But we have to go through and do some quality checks on your stuff that you want. And uh, I'll never forget, she had like a couple of pieces that were with the like tape and notebook paper. And uh, those little pipe cleaners and stuff and I was like. There, I think there was only two or three that I was like, you can't sell this. But that made such a big impact with her, um. My cousin's wife bought a few pieces and she made seven dollars and fifty cents that day. And she was like so excited about it. And then on, she's been, over the years, she's been going through and uh, just. Continuing to learn and grow and the stuff that she's being able to create. Like she just started doing the resin pieces recently because she was watching some videos, so she's like. I didn't even know how she learned how to do it, so I asked her and she's like. You know how you're on Snapchat and then like an ad rolls through, well, I saw one and I clicked on it and then I just watch them every day. So she's just, so she's just adding to her repertoire of things that she can do and she's got. You know, metal pieces that she does and she asked for, or she, I don't even know if she asked, but she wanted to get this. Like legit jewelry making kit with like this little hammer where you can uh. It's got the letters on the end of the little, I don't even know what you call it. It's like a little pillar, but you pound it. And then the letter gets. Indented in the piece. So she's got that, she's got all this stuff and, and she just, I'm, I couldn't be more proud of. What she is doing and so just to think that I had a part in, in that, but when I posted it. I told the story of, you know, who would have thought that she would come this far after just having a toy jewelry making set? And my friend Ryan, who uh, does insurance, he goes. It'll be even greater when you one day realize that it wasn't the jewelry making set that sparked that.
It was you.
Yeah, so.
There's a jewelry store out at like um, a hundred and, I don't know where it is. It, we used to be a hundred and twentieth and center. Called the Silver of Oz and he does um, beginner jewelry making classes.
Ah, nice.
And you get to take a real gemstone home with you and I've been trying to do it. You know.
Yeah.
Might, might wanna hook, Santa might wanna hook her up.
I'll have to look into that, because yeah, she's definitely, um, you know, she's taking a liking to it and is serious about it. She's doing a pop-up here soon. Uh, so yeah, she's gonna put her stuff in, actually this weekend, I think, I ha- haven't heard, but uh, the Smash out in Bellevue. They're gonna set up a little retail area um, in their, their Smash facility, building. And we went out and met with her and she's like, yeah, if she wants to bring out like forty pieces. She can do that and then we'll, you'll get a contract and everything going, so. And I tell you, one of, someone that uh, I, I used to work with who I hadn't seen in I don't know how many years. Uh, they actually messaged her on the page after I made the post and they bought five pieces from her and they're, they're not even in Omaha.
I saw that.
Yeah, they're in Illinois.
Yeah, I saw that. She had cute little dinosaur thingies, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so she sewed out of those quick too. But yeah, that, and that's all it is, Jen, it's just trying to, trying to do my part. That, that's, that's all, playing my role. So we all win.
Well, you know, anytime there's a kid in the neighborhood that's got a lemonade stand or, you know. I mean, we've had kids making jewelry with the little alphabet blocks and pipe cleaners and I run up there, you know? I will go support a little kid any time of the day.
Yep.
You know?
Uh, and, and I wish more, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people do, but i- if we could all realize that we were all. Young dreamers at some point in our lives, that it's important to uh, you know, support those kids and let them know that, hey. We're behind you, wha- whatever you decide to do, like you've got support. So, well Jen, what, what else? Uh, you know, I don't wanna take too much more of your time. Uh, what else would you like to tell everyone about all your community uh? Interactions and things that you're doing to help make the world a better place?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't really have anything else. I mean, honestly, the last, the last year is just really taken, you know, taken its toll and I haven't. Been as active as I wanna be.
Yep.
I made the decision to run for city council, which it's Omaha City Council District Three, Jen Bauer. Um, I said to myself, you know, regardless of the outcome of this election, which I, you know, I fully intend to win. But regardless of the outcome, I want people to know that I'm still an advocate for them. You know, I want them to know that they can come and ask me to go to city council because one of my, one of my missions. In getting to city council is to make it available to people so that they feel heard, you know, and think that's the biggest thing. Three, four years that people just don't feel heard, you know? And I, I think, you know, that, you know, I, I will listen. You know, I don't, I don't care if you're a renter, a business owner, a landlord, homeowner. You know, I, I, you are part of this community and that's, I think, something that's been lost, you know, is that sense of community.
Yep.
So I'm gonna try to make it accessible by moving the city council meetings to a good time where people can go, not two o'clock in the afternoon. Um, or. Yeah, in the middle of the workday. I mean, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so um, yeah, I just, you know, people have my phone number, my email. And, and even if the outcome isn't what I expect or want, I'm still gonna make my voice heard at city council.
Yeah.
On things that are important to me and that affect my, my community.
Yeah. And if I was there, I would vote for you, so.
You so much. Yeah, I have friends all over the country that are like, man, if I was just there, I'm like, oh. Still like my social media posts, you know?
Yep, and I try to, whenever I see them, I, I try to make sure to retweet or uh, you know, give it a like just to make sure that somebody sees them, I'm like. Again, you never know who it might reach, you know?
You don't know. You don't know. It's a great thing about social media. It's also sometimes a bad thing, but it's a great thing.
Yep, yep. Well, thank you so much for being on today, Jen. I appreciate you so much and all the things that you were doing in the community to uh, you know. Just try to spread that joy. We all know you love joy.
And I appreciate you Dee reaching out to me, it really.
Glad to do it. Glad to do it and glad to have you and glad to see your face and talk to you for, you know, an hour or whatever it's been. Uh, forty-five minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're listening to the podcast or if you're on YouTube, please like, subscribe and share. Tell people about the What's Up Omaha podcast and help us grow. Let's grow together. That's what it's all about. Let's grow together. Uh, and we just wanna continue to do things to bring the community to the forefront. And let people know that there are people out there that still care and, you know, wanna live positive, happy lives. That's what it's about. So smile, help someone else smile, laugh and help someone else laugh all day, every day.
Every day. You are welcome. Thank you.